This is the April fifteenth regular meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our district, bless our town, bless our greatest assets, our children. We bless, we ask that you watch over them, guide the staff that take, put so much into them, put so much into their lives. Father, in this world today, we, we face a lot of uncertainty. We ask that you help us turn to you and see your will in everything that we do. Ask for wisdom of, for this board and my colleagues on this board. In your son's holy name, we pray as we begin the season of Easter and we thank you for all that you, all the blessings you have given us. In your son's holy name, amen.
All right, folks, thanks for being here tonight. Dr. Ruffin, do we have special recognitions?
We do. That's probably half the reason we have a full house in here tonight. We've got a whole bunch of kids to recognize, but first, we're going to start, if I can see where she's sitting. There, Dr. Clavo, I see her. So, the special session meeting we had approved the hire of Ms. Christy Starkey as our new CTE director. So, Ms. Starkey, do you want to come on down and say hello?
So, Ms. Starkey currently serves as an assistant principal at MHS. She has served on our CT advisory board, planning the opening of the den and in those amazing facilities, taking over for Ms. Vance, who has just poured everything she possibly can into our CT department to get it to where it is. And we're just very grateful and thankful for the time and effort and energy that she has poured into building up what she is now handing over to Ms. Starkey. So, we're excited for you. We welcome you. And if you'd like to say anything, feel free.
I do, actually. Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to begin by thanking the board and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin for this incredible opportunity. I am truly honored to step into the role of CTE director and campus principal and I am filled with excitement for what lies ahead. I also want to take a moment to recognize the outstanding leadership of Amy Vance and Tony Tennyson. Their work has built a strong foundation and I am grateful for the passion and dedication that they have poured into our CTE programs. It is that foundation that I hope to build upon to be a part of taking our programs and our students to the next level. The den is more than just a building. It is the crown jewel of the district, a place that represents innovation, opportunity, and the future for our community. My goal is simple, to help turn the hopes and dreams of this community into reality. I want our students to feel empowered, to discover their strengths and passions, to explore new ideas and career paths, and to navigate their futures with confidence. I'm especially looking forward to working with, side by side with our amazing staff, stakeholders, industry partners, and ensure that our programs stay relevant, innovative, and connected to the real world. Thank you for your trust in me. I'm honored, excited, and can't wait to get to work.
ahead for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Are there other special recognitions? Sorry, gang, I cut y'all off there. Sorry about that. Other special recognitions?
Just getting started. Mr. Marino, will you come down and welcome our next guests?
Good evening, Dr. Ruffin, Board of Trustees. On our social media, it says home of state champions. And every year, I love seeing more and more students that make, make that achievement. I mean, we have so many outstanding programs, athletics, just student, student opportunities where they excel. And two of those teams tonight that we want to recognize are Destination Imagination teams. So, to celebrate their success at the recent state tournament, advancing to the DI Global Competition this summer. Destination Imagination gives students across the country an opportunity to be a part of a team to develop a solution to open-ended challenges and present their solutions at local tournaments. These teams form in the fall semester and work all year long to showcase their efforts in competitions that are held each spring. Through the challenge program, students learn and experience the creative process from imagination to innovation and learn skills to succeed in school, career, life, including teamwork, communication, project management, perseverance, creative and critical thinking, and self-confidence. So, to tell us more about their teams and to introduce the teams, we have from Creekside Elementary School, Team Manager Robin Riley and the DI team Five More Minutes. And from Lake Creek High School, Team Manager David Herman and the DI team The Couch Convicts. So, I'll bring them up to introduce their teams.
Hello, this is Five More Minutes. And we are an improv team for elementary. We have Kai, Caroline, Yanni, and Eli. And we are third through fifth graders representing Creekside. Our challenge that we do is called, "Are We There Yet?" Where they have to come up with skits within two minutes. And they have a lot of unknowns that they have to prepare for and have a beginning, a middle, a middle, and an end, and do it with ease. And along the way, there is a detour that gets thrown in randomly into their skit. So, they are able to pivot quickly. So, these are a very talented group of kiddos. And team, are we ready?
Are we there yet, team? One, two, three, four, five more minutes.
You guys have quite a impressive amount of hardware there around your neck, too, so.
All right. Good evening. We are The Couch Convicts, the team. On your far side here is Aubrey Clevenger. Aubrey, along with another member, Dylan Height, who is working tonight, have been doing this since third grade. So, they're pros at it. Aubrey is awesome. And she helps me get all the paperwork straight that DI needs and keeps the budget in line for our challenge. Aubrey and Dylan, you know, having done this so long, are very close to one another. Sometimes they also fuss at each other like brother and sister. And we have represented by Taylor Spear, who's another longtime member that has helped us out. And we have the Instant Challenge event, in which we did first place at region and first place at state in that. And she is instrumental in making that happen, gathering and making sure the rules are there and, and getting the discussion started with that. We also have Alexon Beavers and Nathan Crowe are two of the new members. Nathan is at a UIL event tonight. And Alexon has been great in terms of helping us be spiritually and emotionally grounded, gathers the team together at our events. And, you know, Nathan has helped us out. They, this is both of their second year doing this. So, we've got a good mix of teams. As far as our competitions, at region, we took first place, first place Instant Challenge, and we also received a special DI award, the DaVinci Award. We went on to our state competition and finished third in state and once again had high Instant Challenge. In our region, a lot of the teams are from Connor ISD. So, I'm proud to say that we successfully competed against the Woodlands High School, against Woodlands College Park, and against their Academy of Science and Technology. So, that's our Lake Creek DI folks.
If y'all would just hang out for a few more minutes, we're going to go through the rest of them. And then we'll all come down and we'll just kind of all take some pictures together. Thank y'all.
Tonight, we're also proud to congratulate our MISD Academic Decathlon teams for their recent success at the state tournament. Acadec is a program that provides high school students an opportunity to experience the challenges of rigorous academic competition through participation in team activities based on a theme each school year. Through the program, students master college-level material and learn how to present what they know. This is a year-long commitment where students work incredibly hard while navigating the challenges of teamwork, leadership, and time management. Montgomery ISD is proud to offer Acadec courses at both high schools. So, to talk a little bit more about the success of these academic, Acadec programs, we have Ms. Dana Lawson, who does an amazing job over at MHS. And filling in for Mr. Eric Moons, who also does an incredible job at Lake Creek, we have Mr. Tim Williams.
Okay, so this year's theme was our changing climate. And so, they do ten events from art, economics, music, literature, history, science, math. They do all of that, looking through the lens of how our climate is changing and how it's changed over time. From MHS, we had all nine students make it to state. We had three state champions. They, we had lots of medals, but three state champions. Two of them are here tonight. Addison Hedges won, she's our state champion in art. And Christy Talthorster is our state champion in literature. And then also here is Brandon Ing, who is also on the team. Very proud of them. They're mostly all seniors. They have given everything they have to this program. They left it all on the table. They actually, we had three students, the three state medalists actually qualified for nationals, but due to other things, we're not going to go. But they did actually qualify for nationals as well.
Awesome. The lighting in here is not very good. It's getting bad. So, Mr. Moons is committed to Little League baseball tonight, so he couldn't be here.
Did you just blame your readers on the lighting in this room?
Yes, sir, I did. Yes, sir, I did. I did. So, I'm reading on behalf of Mr. Moons here. It's my great privilege to recognize a group of truly exceptional students, our Academic Decathlon team, which participated in the state Academic Decathlon competition. Unfortunately, most of the team's unable to join us this evening due to prior obligations. But join me in celebrating these members of this incredible team. Senior Brett Harrington, I believe Brett's here, junior Matthew Fitzgerald, sophomores Graham Smith, Jaclyn Tesh, Isaac Price, and Hunter Matthews, freshman Jefferson Wayne Jordan Jones and Christian Moons. This year's journey has been one of hard work, determination, and commitment to academic excellence. These students have spent countless hours studying approximately 1,000 pages of material over seven distinct subjects ranging from literature, math, and science, to music, art, economics, and social science, all centered around this year's theme, as Ms. Lawson mentioned, our changing climate. In addition to these seven disciplines, they also deliver a four-minute prepared speech, a two-minute impromptu speech, participate in an interview, and when given a choice of three prompts that could stem from any one of the thousand pages of material, write a complete essay in 50 minutes. Each year, they are presented with a new topic of study and spend the summer preparing for next year's competition. The theme for next year is the roaring twenties. So, they will get the unique opportunity to participate in an in-depth study of electricity, magnetism, algebraic, and trigonometric concepts in the Jazz Age through art, literature, music, and economics. These students have already begun preparing for next year by reading the selected novel, The Great Gatsby. Together, these students represent the very best of our academic community, and their advancement to state is a testament to what we, what can be accomplished through teamwork, perseverance, and a passion for learning. Looking forward to seeing what this young group, I mentioned a lot of sophomores and freshmen in that group of competitors can accomplish together next year. Thank you, Mr. Moons.
And then our final recognition tonight, I'd like to ask our two high school principals from Montgomery High School, Dr. Clavo, and Lake Creek High School Principal, Mr. Williams, to come up and introduce our valedictorians and salutatorians for 2025.
Took them off to give them a break. Go ahead.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Great, Troy.
So, you know, the room is filled with a lot of, a lot of success already from our Acadec. And we've had other teams that I do want to acknowledge that have gone on to advance past state with our BPA and also our robotics, whether it be Worlds or, Worlds or Nationals. High school's filled, especially at MHS and I know Lake Creek as well, with exceptional students that perform in many different fields, whether it be extracurriculars, on the, on the field, the court, dance. But most importantly, why we're here is in the classroom. But what's interesting is, you know, one of those just advanced in Acadec, and she's sitting right here today, and we'll, we'll get into her last. But I do want to invite Mr. Joseph Rizzo up here with me. So, Joseph got some tidbits on him and is our salutatorian, which is second for those that, I wouldn't have known that in my school career, but that is second. Joseph originally, he's from New York. He's got a passion for travel. He's visited 19 states and even spent two months living in Haiti. His academic journey began with homeschooling from kindergarten through second grade. Sorry, man. He's, it's a fun fact about Joseph is he enjoys singing in the shower, TMI. And his favorite food is his mom's homemade sauce, but she won't give it up. Joseph reflects fondly on his time at Montgomery ISD, especially the supportive staff and his lasting friendships he's made since moving to Montgomery in fourth grade. His accomplishments include being a state UIL competitor for social studies, serving as president of the National Honor Society, and actively volunteering through his church. Joseph plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin in the fall, unless he's admitted off the waitlist to Harvard. He will study biochemistry with aspirations of attending medical school. Congratulations to Montgomery High School's class of 2025, salutatorian Joseph Rizzo.
Hey, Dr. Clavo, you forgot to mention, he's got a future in voiceover. If you've ever heard that guy talk?
He does have a great voice because he, he did.
He's got the deepest, slowest.
He was our, come up here. Say, say hello to the board.
Come on.
Hello, everybody.
He, he did, he emceed our National Honor Society induction ceremony where we introduced 104 new members earlier.
Last week, right?
Last week. It was awesome. He did a great job, better than me. So, radio voice for sure. So, next, I'm going to introduce our valedictorian. There's always got to be one. And it is Addison Hedges. Control those. So, Addie, she's not a big fan of change. Well, it's coming. So, she's had bangs since she was three.
Did your mom cut those?
Yep.
Okay. It's always the mom. She's worn the same style of shoes since sixth grade and has held the number one class rank through all four years of high school. Her favorite movie is High School Musical. She drinks coffee to an, at an absurdly excessive degree. We can't hang out. And proudly calls herself the most disorganized person ever, just ask her friends. Addison serves as president of Mu Alpha Theta and vice president of the Interact Club. One of her favorite interact experiences has been volunteering at Live Oak Senior Care, where she helped lead sit-and-fit classes and organize fun events like a senior car wash for the residents. As the historian for Leo Club, she's loved getting to connect with her community and club members. A dedicated academic competitor, Addie has spent three years in Acadec, earning two state championships in literature and one in art. She has also been a state-level competitor in UIL journalism, writing, and literary criticism. Addison, are you going to be a lawyer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just checking. Addison has also held a consistent job these last few years and as a professional math tutor, as a professional math tutor. During her summer, she interns at a local criminal law office. Addison will be attending Texas A&amp;M University in the fall to study history, with plans to pursue law school in the future. Congratulations to the top Montgomery High School graduate of the class of 2025, Addison Hedges.
Howdy. Got to get prepared.
Don't get them started. So, I do just want to reiterate how proud I am of these two. It's a big honor to be one and two, especially in a class filled with exceptional students. So, congratulations again. Y'all's hard work has definitely paid off. And please give your parents a hug and, because it's not going to be easy pretty soon. But, parents, thank you. Thank you for your support. So, thank you, guys.
I get to start off with introducing Ms. Alyssa Walters. I asked Alyssa a few questions. Obviously, college, it's got a couple of colleges up there, but just recently, we made the commitment to UT, where she will major in civil engineering. Talked about what she's looking for going into college, and she's looking for that independence and time to focus on her passions in school. What was she nervous about going into college? She talked about meeting new people in the classes and especially in those engineering classes. Favorite food is that Thai food. Probably get a lot of that in Austin. Favorite thing about time at Lake Creek, favorite thing is, uh, Lake Creek would be meeting my amazing teachers, maintaining friendships that will continue through college. I talked to some of Alyssa's teachers and some of the things that they shared about Alyssa. This prestigious honors, honor is well-deserved, as her commitment to academic success has not changed from when they knew her as a freshman, from now as a senior, from Ms. Hanle. She is thankful to have taught her for three years. Beautiful, well-rounded young lady that she's excited for her future. Ms. Moons spoke on behalf of Alyssa. Alyssa is a rare type of teenager. Wasn't sure where that was going at first. But then she's a teen who truly loves learning and shows such gracious appreciation for the opportunity to learn. In AP Art History, I have a students who are there for the GPA boost, and I have art lovers. Alyssa is a lover of art. She's an old soul who sees the importance of art and our world's history. And she truly thinks about what we are learning rather than just memorizing facts. Her work ethic would be impressive for a fully experienced professional adult, let alone a teenager in high school. Ms. Lee, Alyssa is grounded and has a kind heart. She loves to learn and is persistent in the face of challenges. When she does make mistakes, she wants to understand her error. Alyssa always had her work done and was very consistent, even when she played softball. I appreciate her gift and determination, her grit and determination. And then Ms. Lorenz, Alyssa Walters has truly blossomed into an incredible woman during her time at Lake Creek High School. She's both honest and brilliant, never afraid to speak her mind, but always with the grace and maturity to make space for others to do the same. She's the epitome of what we wish for in the next generation. Huge words from Ms. Lorenz on behalf of Alyssa. Also, I mean, Alyssa also at Montgomery, I mean, Montgomery Girl Softball Association had probably one of the best coaches I've ever known to go through there, myself, where I got to coach Alyssa, I believe in 12 of you maybe. I think we're the yard goats. So, that was an awesome time, I'm sure, for Alyssa, if she ever gets the chance to talk about that somewhere. But Alyssa Walters are salutatorian. Would you like to say a couple of words, Alyssa?
Just thank y'all for the invite.
You earned, you earned the invite, Alyssa. Brett? As Dr. Clavo mentioned, excelling, you know, we're in, we're in the hiring season for teachers. And it is awesome to sit across from applicants. And the number one sell is, we, we compete and succeed on the fields and in the classroom, across the board, whether through band. Brett just returned from band competition, where a band, can we tell them what they scored?
All ones.
All ones. So, it's no secret that a band performing and ending in sight reading did well. So, we was glad that Brett got here. Brett is attending the University of Texas in Austin, going to study music composition. Looking forward to college. He's looking forward to being able to put a lot more time and energy, energy into his passion. Nervous about college, nervous about adjusting to the new lifestyle and schedule that he'll have in college. Favorite food is salami. Not peanut butter jelly sandwiches, but salami. That's another story. We visited that one. Favorite thing about Lake Creek High School is the people, able to meet so many wonderful teachers, friends, and more at Lake Creek. Mr. Boozer talked about Brett. Brett has always been an outstanding student in all of his courses since I began teaching him the trumpet in the sixth grade. Over the course of these seven years, I've grown to appreciate his curiosity and creativeness towards music. Outside of being a bandleader and an outstanding trumpet soloist in both classical and jazz, he also demonstrated his musical prowess when the Lake Creek Symphonic Band performed a piece by him last year at his first public premiere. Ms. Maury had Brett as a freshman in advanced biology and as a senior in AP Calculus. He's one of the rare students in my career who excels at just about everything. Not only is he fantastic in math and science, but he excels in music, language, and social sciences as well. A delight to work with, and his peers recognize him as a leader. He will forever be the king of the Garfield gang. Just asking. Ms. Maury. Cox, Ms. Cox, Brett was a character from the first day to the last day in my class. From his tiny note-taking abilities to his deceptively easygoing academic style, Brett is incredibly perceptive and inquisitive. He can make me laugh and frustrate me all in one sentence, and it has been a pleasure to have taught him. And then Ms. Lee, Brett is always polite and respectful. He comes across as easygoing, but under that calm demeanor, he is driven to understand. He's responsible, intentional, and very accurate. It's been a pleasure to be a part of both of these students' journeys through junior high and at high school, which is a unique opportunity for myself, as also many others, but our valedictorian, Brett Harrington. Would you like to share a word, Brett?
Hola. Thank you, guys.
We'll have Creekside DI come up first, and then in order of the recognitions.
See what you did there.
Oh, their mama's got to come up now.
Why?
Okay, got it.
All right. I asked the Five More Minutes group to hang out for five more minutes so that I could make a real brief comment to them. Tonight has been about academic excellence in our school district, and I think I can speak for many of, uh, many of the kiddos that we've gotten the pleasure to meet. You guys are well, you represent Montgomery ISD well. And to the Five More Minutes group, in five more years, some of y'all will be in high school, and some of y'all will be doing some of the things that you see represented tonight. It takes hard work. It takes dedication. It takes a commitment to your academic excellence. And I'm so proud that we have a school district that fosters that and helps that grow. To our teachers that made this possible, thank you. This is an amazing opportunity that you've done for all of our children. It's a labor of love. Thank you for all that you do. And to our parents, thank you for raising great kids. Makes the world of a difference. For one more round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. All right, folks, we've got business ahead. There are four registered public comments tonight. We will begin that process. Thank you for registering to speak with the board this evening so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes. As you can see, there are a limited number of instances in which the board can respond to you during public comment. Given that we cannot respond during public comment, we ask that you do not take the board's lack of comment as a show of acquiescence or any statement. We simply cannot respond to anything at this time. We cannot take votes or actions based upon public comments. Please keep comments respectful and focused on the topic that you registered to speak. All right, first up, ladies and gentlemen, we have our timer set, three minutes. Josh Jeros from Montgomery.
Good evening, MISD Board. I recently sent you an email in regard to some statements that were made on our district website that had to do with tax rates and transparency. The one statement that I brought out in the email reads, "The board was very excited to adopt a lower property tax rate, which will provide homeowners with much-needed relief." This was from our 2023 tax rate that you all had set. The problem with it is it's completely inaccurate. It's not transparent. That year, in 2023, you actually voted to raise the proposed rate 12 points. In fact, every single year since 2020, this board has moved to raise taxes. And I think the discrepancy here is though, even though the board can set a rate that is lower than the previous year, you're still setting that rate at a rate that raises taxes by setting it above the no new revenue tax rate. I think some of you may be confused about that, may not understand exactly how the taxing system works. There's nothing to be ashamed about it, but we're at the point right now where I have homeowners that are reaching out to me, asking me for tax relief. You know, a lot of times, we focus on these programs for children, but what many of you don't know is we've got people that are having to work extra hours and take extra jobs just so they can meet the financial responsibilities for these property tax bills. That means that these parents are spending more time away from the home, not with the children. There's other things than just the programs at school that these tax rates are affecting. Y'all have never, ever, ever provided relief for taxpayers, and yet in 2023, you took credit for what the state legislature did. Now, if we had a child that came to school and say they used AI to provide a, uh, some type of a homework assignment to a teacher, and that teacher found out that that child, that was not really his work, that child would be punished, and rightfully so. When you all have taken credit for what the state legislature has done, that is not being transparent. When you guys set the tax rate above the new revenue, no new revenue tax rate and increase the property taxes on homeowners, and then in another, in a statement on your website, hey, we've lowered the tax rate, it confuses people. Now, I got an email back from, from the board president. It says that you guys value transparency and clear communication. And the ask that I have for tonight is that you guys give clear, clear communication, that you change the misleading statements on your website to more accurately reflect what you guys are doing with setting the tax rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeros. Next up, Robert Coats of Montgomery.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bob Coats. I'm the, uh, I hate doing this because I'm about to say something Ronald Reagan said about never taking credit, but I am the area chairman for any Montgomery address in this county, Montgomery City, for the Republican Party, former election integrity chairman for this county, and I used to represent April Sound all over the place. And I will tell you this, the reason why I'm here is because I've been holding off for years. Because I'm a former teacher, I know how hard it is to be on a board. But some of the things that I'm seeing on the spending side are ridiculous. You have no citizens budget-type committee, which exists in many school districts, where people can say, how, why are you, you don't do any line item budgeting at all. I think you guys basically, in a way, are abrogating your duty and allowing simply the superintendent to handle it. It's not, that's a hell of a terrible way to do it. Doge is coming to Texas, whether we like it or not, in schools, and schools will be examined, believe you me. And, and everybody know this, I love educators in education, but having anyone in any position, and don't say schools and education have to be different than private business, they do not have to be. We could have more money for teacher raises if you guys would simply do something that a lot of school districts already do, which is zero-based budgeting through line items. You don't even do that. That means that there is a tremendous amount of money going, well, just spend that, just spend that. It creates a culture of spending and never considering, and if you're only considering, we need more money for fast growth, we're growing fast. If you're not considering the spending side and putting spending discipline at every campus, you're going to spend wildly. There have been differential years that are in your numbers on a political pollster. There have been differential numbers where actual spending and then the amount that was taxed is up to 22 to 24 cents in certain years. And that means, not 22 or 24 cents, that means millions of dollars. So you can't say that the money isn't there. You need to approach a less bonding-out approach and a more restrained financial approach that frees up money every year for small raises for teachers so they can keep up with inflation. You'd have less of a problem than what you're doing now, but you've never thought like that, and I know most educators don't. We need money. We need money. Stop that. You're in Texas. There may be a bill next year that I may introduce that we have partisan school board members. Why? Because we, we need real conservatives in Texas. We do. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Coats. Next up, Sonora Lilly of Montgomery, Texas.
Hi, guys. So the MISD website includes some information about our superintendent, Mr. Ruffin, and it states that his leadership philosophy is based on the idea that success is a collective effort. He believes in creating a collaborative environment where everyone has a role to play. So today, we're excited to participate in this collaborative environment by representing the senior class of 2025 and our perspective on the decoration of graduation caps. So every high school student anticipates their graduation for years. It's an extremely important milestone and accomplishment. And although you would expect graduation to be an opportunity for each student to express their unique personality and accomplishments that they've developed over the years, this is not exactly the case. Each student is required to wear an identical gown, plastering a purple or blue mask over their individuality. Although school pride is very important to represent, creativity was unintentionally stripped from what is meant to be our celebration for the seniors' accomplishments. Not only did the seniors decorate their caps to express themselves, but a lot of them also use this to honor family members or friends who couldn't be with them on their special day. And we know that people will misuse this, and although we understand that some kids could abuse this freedom, there are many ways to prevent misuse, and it's unfair to restrict the majority because of the actions of a couple individuals. As seniors, we propose that the rule prohibiting the decoration and personalization of graduation caps be removed, but with some stipulations. By requiring the students to bring their personalized graduation cap to the practice graduations, teachers can ensure that the caps are school-appropriate. They can check them at the practice, at the mock graduation. If a student brings an inappropriate cap, they can be required to purchase a new blank cap, and their decorated cap will be confiscated. The only spending that would be necessary for this is for a few extra blank caps, which could be used the following year. I'm going to have my friend Anaya come speak on how we got to this point and why we know that all the seniors in MISD are backing us.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. And next up, Anaya Perry Price of Montgomery.
Hi, I'm also a senior at the MISD schools. Continuing off of what Sonora said, you may be wondering why we came to speak on behalf of the entire senior class and not our own personal opinions. Originally, we've written a petition for, uh, seniors to sign around the school. This is the original petition. It became too filled up, and also Lake Creek students also wanted to sign, so we ended up making a Google form for all seniors to sign. Over 300 seniors have signed from both Montgomery and Lake Creek. Six pages, front and back. And we believe this demonstrates what Dr. Ruffin had spoke about, about a collective effort being a success. Although we understand why this is, why the original rule wasn't forced, we hope that you consider our perspective and our solution to the previous misuse. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Ms. Perry Price, thank you very much. Dr. Ruffin, I would ask that we, that you are an appropriate designee follow-up with the speakers. Ladies and gentlemen, next we are moving on to consent agenda. Board members, I would like to pull an item out for special highlighting tonight from the board agenda, item B. If you don't mind, if you'll afford me that singular approach, I would like to pull that out. So, folks, can we vote on consent agenda as item A, C, and D first? Is there a motion to carry consent agenda, item A, C, and D? Thank you, Mr. Rob. All those in favor? Aye? Oppose? Abstain? Folks, the reason I wanted to pull item B out of consent agenda is that it is our month, March monthly financial report. This is a report that is given to the board every month. It, it allows us to review our financials as a district. I simply wanted to point out that, that comment, very briefly, this is something we do every month. It is a part of consent agenda. Is there an item, is there any discussion on that? Okay. Then it lets motion to carry that as a separate item, monthly financials. Is there a motion to carry items B? Item B.
I'll make the motion to consider, um, item B, um, to approve this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. All those in favor? Oh, wait, I need a second. Mr. Rob was my second. He showed his hand. Thank you, Mr. Rob. All those in favor? Aye? Oppose? Abstain? Thank y'all for humoring me on that. Item 6A, consider approval to enter an agreement on MidSouth Electric Cooperative.
Mr. Mansfield.
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, Dr. Ruffin. Bring to you tonight a, uh, agenda item that is for MidSouth Water and Wastewater Agreement for Creekside Elementary. What this agenda item is, is we have been to talks with them, and we are at the point where we feel good about the, uh, the agreement, and we're asking for permission for Dr. Ruffin to finalize that agreement moving forward.
I was going to highlight a few things within this process with, with MidSouth. So they service the wastewater for currently Lake Creek, Oak Hills, and Keenan High School, and this is tying Creekside into that wastewater plant. And I want to honestly just commend Mr. Mansfield and his team for not just signing a contract without doing due diligence, without reading it, without looking at what exactly are we being asked to pay. Because of that oversight, we have, we've gone away from, we were presented a 40-year agreement, 40-year agreement with a, over a $10,000 just flat fee. And it's, it's all based legally on MESEC's tariff, so they're within the realm of what they're presenting. But Mr. Mansfield, through conversations, through due diligence, has garnered a new agreement that's going to save the district over $100,000 a year just in our, uh, our fees for wastewater and water to Creekside. So thank you for your work on that, and I want to thank MidSouth for, for their willingness to come and sit down at the table. And, and part of that agreement states that I, as a superintendent, agree that rates and fees are reasonable and just and a good representation of taxpayer funds. And the original agreement was not that. And so hats off to MidSouth for their willingness to understand that, that we've got to be able to attest to our stakeholders, that that financial oversight, that stewardship is a part of everything that we do, even all the way down to handling wastewater, which no one really likes that business. But, um, so thank you so much for your time there and your work.
Any questions?
On behalf of the board, I would just like to say thank you, Brad, too, for going above and beyond and just not accepting it. I know the amount of hours of meeting with MidSouth, the amount of hours you and your team put together to make this happen. It is significant, the, the amount of savings there. On behalf of us up here at the board, we appreciate the work that you did here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, let's put a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Denison. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Mr. Cameron, I'm sorry. Didn't catch, didn't catch it. Sorry, Mr. Cameron. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain that motion carries. Next up, considering approval of a passenger trip buses for transportation.
Right, so the agenda, um, item is for two passenger buses, 14 passenger buses. I think Dr. Ruffin, um, in his wisdom, wants to buy some of these to get our kids to and from events where we don't need a full-size bus, right? It does not require CDL, and we can, um, have coaches drive those that may not need a, a CDL to do that. Sometimes our bus drivers, you know, they're asked to go on trips and things in a full-size bus, and it may not be necessary. So, um, and we, we went out and, uh, Mr. Taylor went out and got three bids. Of the three bids, we reviewed, went over, talked about what's the best value for the district. Our recommendation is Longhorn and their buses, and they're around $99,000 apiece. And that is, um, we are asking for action on that tonight. for action on that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Board members, is there a question, are questions?
I think that it's gonna be a great asset, you know, for us to have now, for it to go forward.
What, uh, what kind of warranty?
So, uh, this, the, the one that we're selecting is a one-year, uh, 12,000-mile bumper to bumper, but there's also a 50,000, or five-year, 100,000 mile on the chassis and drivetrain from Ford. So they take a Ford chassis, put the box from a company called Collins on top of it, and that box then kind of is retrofit to fit on top of that chassis. And so the chassis itself, I believe, is, is also 100,000 mile for rust and things like that and, and, uh, delamination, uh, as well. And there's also, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, a two-year?
For the, it's a, a three-year, but four-piece, and then it's a, say, five-year, 3,000 for the engine.
But for, from the Collins piece, it's a one-year.
One-year for everything, and then they warranty, first they manufacture, three-years, 36,000, and, uh, it's longer for, I don't know.
It's a little bit, uh, uh, there's a three-year, 36 on the other two, uh, for bumper to bumper, but it was 8,000 more on the next lowest bid. And so in talking with the team and transportation, the value there is, um, for that extra, uh, warranty, uh, wasn't cost-effective in our, in our view.
Are we gonna equip these with cameras like our regular buses as well?
We, we, the plan is to do that. Yeah.
And last question is, will we have these for the start of next year?
We will. They have them in, we have a letter of intent, correct, that says they are on the lot pretty much. There'll be some things we have to do to it with a security camera, some labeling, but, uh, and our package stuff, but we will have it procured and paid for.
Other questions?
And where will they be housed at?
Cur, like, uh, are you talking about because of the construction over there?
Storage, I mean. Where they be at each campus or at the bus barn?
Bus, bus barn.
Bus barn.
With checkout process, same as a bus, field trip process and all that. We'll have it, we have a procedure for checking out even Suburbans and things like that, non-CTE stuff.
And this should be a more comfortable ride for the students and everything compared to a regular bus.
Right, you said not CTE stuff, what?
Well, like, the CTE vehicles are checked out for CTE purposes. So we have the same process, just like if you're gonna check out a Suburban to drive to a staff development, we have one Suburban available or expedition for those. So, but that's for anybody. CTE is just designated for CTE vehicles, the purchase of CTE funds.
So, all of our white fleet though, is, is housed at transportation?
We, we had to do some shifting around, uh, from Liberty to Lone Star because of the construction, but it is housed there, and it's checked out.
Even the CTE vehicles?
Yeah, as far as I know. I mean, they are.
They just go to Lone Star facility?
Just to the Lone Star facility. But hope, when it all's done, we're gonna bring them back into one location. It's a bit of a trip for some CT teachers to go to Lone Star right now, but the construction caused that.
Other questions? Hearing none, let's put a motion.
I'll make the motion to consider approval of purchase over 50,000 for passenger trip buses.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Uh, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain that motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Taylor and the transportation crew. Action item 6C, consider approval for chillers at MHS and King and Keenan.
So the, um, chillers at MHS, the chiller that, that we're asking to be replaced today has had issues for a while. It's been out, um, been kind of hanging on by a thread. The freeze pushed it over the edge. It's 14 years old. Um, and that one is a 200-ton unit. Um, the one at Keenan Elementary, um, was close to lifespan, but it was seven years old. Um, we had some freeze issues with that one, too, during that, uh, that time. Um, we are moving forward, putting in some, um, freeze protection items through some of our renovations, um, through running some things through generators, barrel heaters, continuous pumps, um, that we've worked through our, with our engineering consultants about. In this case, um, we went out, uh, for quotes, Joe did, and, and maintenance, um, through buyboard pricing, and, um, got three quotes for each one of them. The first one for MHS, um, we are recommending, um, the Magnum Air, um, our Magnum Air, our Magnum Air, um, for the 200-ton MHS. That is, we're gonna purchase the 10-year warranty on that one. Uh, another addition that we added to those, that specific chiller in both these chillers is an E-coil or a coil coating that protects it. I mean, in Texas, it rains, it's hot, it's cold. Um, this is supposed to give it some longevity, um, to add that coating to those coils and protect them a little bit longer. But we are, uh, buying and purchasing the extended warranty for that. Um, and the Keenan Elementary, um, that one was a bit oversized in the original design based on our, um, uh, air conditioning consultant, and we are requesting to purchase, it's a 240-ton, uh, right now over there, we're requesting to purchase a 180-ton. The difference between Keenan and Montgomery High School is Keenan in elementary has two chillers. That's it. Montgomery High School has four. Um, and, and, and so if one goes down, the other ones can pick up the, the slack, right? If one goes down at an elementary, it can pick up the slack, especially as oversized as this one is. Um, but if two go down, we're in trouble, right? And so you may just have half a chiller working. Uh, we did want to, we have the company we decided to go with here. Um, originally, uh, the quote came back, uh, higher than it was, and we, Joe went back through some due diligence and asked, because they offered up a temporary chiller unit that if that other chiller did go down, they can hook it up, and we can keep rolling at Keenan Ele, uh, Keenan Elementary. If we didn't have that option, we would have to go out and rent one to keep school going on there, keep the environment comfortable. Um, that could cost upwards of $20,000 a month. This company, which is TNR, offered up a chiller they have on site. They have several, several that they can use during the installation of these other chillers, or if the other one goes down. They offered us, that to us as a, almost a contingency. So they're not gonna charge us for it unless we use it. So it knocked $17,000 off the price originally that they had, because we just took it out unless we need it. If we need it, it'll keep it, it, uh, it'll keep it, um, it'll add $17,000 to it, which is significantly cheaper than having to rent a chiller. It, it may not go out. We may just roll right through and not need that additional chiller, but it's, uh, we felt it was a good value to have that, um, insurance plan in place. If one does go out, we don't have to go and rent one for a monthly cost, which could be with a 30 to 40-week, um, you know, uh, timeframe to get these chillers in, and a little bit even three-week to get them installed. That risk could add up pretty quickly. So we felt like it was the best value to go for that. So the actual quote right now, uh, is, uh, is for $274,000 for that chiller, which is the lowest of all three of them. If we do end up using the chiller that they offered us, it would be an additional 17,000 on top of that. If we don't use it, we're not charged for it, if that makes sense. Long story.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Rob.
So, I understand we're buying a warranty, are they providing some sort of a maintenance package, at least for the first, I don't know, they are coming out annually and checking these things and making sure that things are operating correctly?
I didn't notice that in the 10-year warranty as a component of that. We can certainly do some research on that option to have people out. We have HVAC staff on that are well-versed in, in, in our, um, HVAC equipment chillers, they're trained, they're, that do those servicing, uh, annually. Uh, they check on it. We have pumps that go down more often. Hopefully, a campus never even notices it, uh, when they go down. So, um, I can ask them about these new chillers, uh, what that would look like. I can certainly do that.
Is that, uh, please do, is that, is that warranty, is it a parts and labor or just, or is it just a parts?
It is a parts and labor warranty.
Okay, thank you.
There are other questions?
Looking at that, uh, with that train that passed and we're moving the carriers, is there a reason behind that?
You know, I asked that same thing, because MHS is the only thing we've had a train on. And, uh, our guys, I think, uh, here have, have preferred the carriers. Um, and, uh, the trains right now are the only ones we have left at MHS. That cycle started before with some of these chiller replacements, and it's just continued. Um, I don't know all the details of why we choose carrier over train. Uh, I think it's just a preference, um, for, with some of the experiences we had with train and, uh, and just what was available at the time, or, you know. But I don't know the whole story on why we went carrier over train. But MHS is the only place we have left with those.
Mr. Mansfield, you answered one of my questions, which was, uh, four years ago, one of my first acts as president at that time was the emergency replacement of a chiller. We seem to have chiller challenges. And I'm curious if with this motion, do we kind of, in your opinion, get caught up, get up to snuff with our chillers across the district? Or is this gonna continue to be a challenge?
Uh, I, I don't know that it won't be a challenge ever, uh, when, when it comes to HVAC anything. Um, but we have new chillers at the triplets through the renovation process. We have new chillers at, uh, uh, one new chiller at Oak Hills. We now will have a new chiller at Keenan. The other one is close to lifespan. Um, we'll have, uh, Lake Creek, uh, I think is, they're seven years, seven, eight years old. Uh, I believe MES has had new chillers installed before I got here. Uh, Lincoln, I believe, has had some new chillers installed, too. So we, it feels like, I asked Joe that question. It feels like we've put a lot of money into chillers here. A lot of them were at lifespan. It shouldn't be as big an issue later on. Um, but we, uh, we're coming up on lifespan on a few of them. Um, it's a, uh, Joe and I have talked about, um, and we're moving forward in the process of moving forward with a kind of a major maintenance plan, an outline of, okay, where are we? What can we expect, um, on some replacement components and parts that are gonna go into some of these things, not just chillers, but other things? Chillers is a large expense. It's one of the largest expenses in the district. We're in better shape than we were, uh, and that's, uh, before I got here. I mean, I mean, that, that, that work was in place. Uh, so I think I feel after these two, at these two schools, I think we'll be in good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Are there any other questions, board? All right, hearing one, hearing none, let's put the motion forward.
Make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, purchase of over $50,000 for chiller units for MHS and Keenan, uh, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose and abstain, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield.
Thank y'all.
All right, item 6D, approval for CTE technology with CTE funds.
Ms. Vance. Okay, the first item is for the technology. Uh, we'll be replacing three computer labs. Um, it totals to $133,200. It's paid for with CTE funds. Um, I, in honest, all honesty, I deferred through technology on this. I don't know about computers, but, um, they did their research, got multiple quotes, and they came up with this company that they got the best pricing on for the type of computers we needed. Um, and it has to do with our current computers in these three labs. Um, we'll, we'll not do the update with the new operating system that's gonna happen in the fall. So we're trying to be proactive, because the computers will no longer be able to update or be protected. So we have to, we have to update these three computer labs.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Vance. Board members, questions for Ms. Vance?
Any, uh, what are we doing with the current computers that are in there? Are there, is there a way to recycle them or anything like that?
Uh, we will be recycling those, once we take them out. Uh, we have a recycler.
Okay, other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposal as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Rob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose and abstain, that motion carries. All right, uh, next up, 6E, consider approval of over 50,000 for the CTE curriculum with CTE funds.
Um, our next item is an online curriculum platform that we currently use called ICEV. Um, and the great thing, it's a sole-source type of thing, um, a very individualized that they've come up with that's web-based. And it allows CTE teachers access to multiple curriculums and preps and pathways, which we have. All of our CTE teachers teach multiple preps, completely different. You know, they might go from livestock to plants to ag mechanics all in one day. So, um, we really, our teachers really enjoy this curriculum, because when we pay their site license fee, they have access to all of the pathways, um, instead of having to buy individual resources from companies. Um, and so, uh, we, we made sure to do, um, we had an eight-year subscription, and they've gone a lot, up in a lot of pricing because of inflation. So we did a lot of research with our teachers of who's actually using it, and we came up with these 30 teachers, and it's a one-year subscription for the $56,000.
Thank you, Ms. Vance. Board members, any questions? Ms. Vance, uh, the curriculum aligns with our community values and what we hope for, correct? That's been vetted and reviewed?
Yes. Um, they're all state-adopted, it's state-adopted curriculum. Um, we just, Montgomery IC doesn't get enough for everything that we need to buy new curriculum for. So, um, CT uses our funds for curriculum, but it's all state-adopted curriculum.
Okay. Just because it's state-adopted means it passes your muster, correct?
We still look into everything and make sure, and vet it with teachers and us, looking through everything before we purchase it, yes.
Got it. Thank you. Other questions? All right, hearing none, let's put a motion on the curriculum forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the $50,000 for CTE curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose and abstain, that motion also carries. Thank you, Ms. Vance. Action item 6F, consider approval of technology purchase over 50,000 for some classroom infrastructure at MES, LES, LSE, Stewart Creek, MRE, and KES.
Hi, so this is to replace all of the classroom charging carts. So when we went out for bond in '22, we had a ton of, like, um, small 12, um, 12-compartment charging carts that we reused across the district. So we gathered them all up, stripped them all out, rewired them, um, put them in classrooms, so that way we could save a little bit of money, um, when we implemented the one-to-one, um, device policy. And so this is just the maintenance item of being able to replace those. They've been in the classrooms for about two and a half years, and they've had a lot of wear and tear. They're getting difficult for students to put devices back and make sure they're locked and charged at night. And so this is just one of those pieces that we knew that was going to come up. We just didn't want to use it out of bond money to purchase those at the beginning.
Questions? Ms. Davis, uh, I have one question. So is, is, that's what, two and a half, three years? Is that a normal wear and tear cycle for this piece of equipment? It seems really short to me.
These, the charging carts that we moved into the classrooms had already been in the district for five to seven years. So they were multiple, they were years of purchases, um, across the entire district, including high schools. When we got rid of carts in the classrooms for high schools, those all went back, those all went down to elementary. Um, so that is not a normal wear and tear. Three years is not. Um, so they've been, I mean, we've been using them for close to 10 years.
So our elementary kiddos have had the older ones, and that's why we're listing elementaries here tonight?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Um, hearing none. We still have a quorum. Um, let's put a motion forward.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of technology purchases over 50,000 for classroom infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Ivy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose and abstain, that motion carries. Mr. Rob will abstain on that one. Ms. Alcantara. Action item 6G, consider approval of a purchase for silent panic alert technology.
Thank you. Um, this is kind of a, it's been a long process for this one. I want to take a moment to, um, explain kind of our process behind this. So in 2021, when I was on-boarded, um, David was on my team at that time, and we started talking about what it would look like to enhance classroom technology. What would we need to do in order to make sure that we are meeting compliance legislature? At that time, House Bill 3 was not passed yet. Um, so Alyssa's Law had been introduced into the legislator in '21, but it was not passed. Um, so we knew that was coming. We didn't know quite what, what all it entailed, what all it had to do. Um, but we started thinking about, well, what do we want to make sure that our, um, teachers and our faculty had at their fingertips? What was important to us? So Diana and David and, um, a couple of the police officers at the time, sat down and started having that conversation in '21. So everything that we've done in bond '22 to have classroom engagement in the, inside of the classroom has been designed to make sure that it was, um, working with whatever we chose for silent panic alarm technology years in the future. So we took into consideration the PA system. We took into consideration how it would work in the classroom, what would the teacher have to do, um, what would administrator have to do. So a lot of thought and prep has gone into this, um, prior to us making this choice. Do you need to stand somewhere else? Are you good?
Man, the sun's giving me that song. I'm sorry.
Um, and Chief and Sergeant have been a big part of that. Dr. Busby was a part of that. Um, Kyle in the back, he's hiding or left, um, has been a, a big part of that just because of his experience with the security piece. Um, David, Diana, we've, we've been looking at this for a while. So what is Alyssa's Law? Um, it is legislative- It is legislation focused on improving school safety by ensuring that schools are equipped with emergency alert systems that allow for immediate notification for, of law enforcement in the event of a life-threatening situation. So the requirements of House Bill 3 was that we implement it by fall of 2025. Instant emergency alerts, real-time, one-button push, discrete activation, we don't want people to know that it's happening, but we do need to let the rest of the campus know. Integration with our current security systems, it has to lock our doors if we have access control on our doors. And then funding support was there through the safety grant. So the purpose of SPAT is to enhance response time. We want 911 office, 911 personnel, first responders to be immediately notified that there's an event on our campus. We don't want to have panic or chaos, which means that we don't want to call on the radio, we don't want to alert students if we can control the situation, and to also improve coordination between what's happening on the campus, our first responders, and our local police department. So currently, we have RAVE. This is required to be on every single staff member's device. It requires cell reception inside of our buildings. I don't know if you've been into the Lake Creek side of the house, but cell reception is pretty bad. We don't have a solution, like a full solution for substitutes, and our contract is coming up for renewal in the fall. So we felt that this year was a great time to start looking at other vendors, other opportunities to bring something else into our district that would be beneficial. So the things that mattered most, this was not only through presentations, this was also talking with different stakeholders. We wanted a slim wearable design. We wanted to have visitor management integration, integration with our current systems, not just with our access control, but we also wanted to be able to control our PA system, send visible messages to our staff in that situation, a process for reunification and accountability, a solution for substitutes, and then be able to use strobes throughout the building to let first responders or even parents know that there's something active happening on the campuses, and that's the reason why they're not allowed into a building. Good?
Very good.
Just making sure, just checking on my people.
Your role and keep going.
All right. So our evaluation process, we did a cost analysis exercise, so we reached out to several of our vendors. We got kind of a five-year contract of what that would look like, just to make sure that what we were expecting in the RFP was accurate numbers. We gathered feedback, we went, presented to the safety committee, we asked questions, what was important to them, what things did we not consider, what do we, what do we need to consider when we go out for RFP? We issued our RFP in March, and then we did a proof of concept last week with a committee of about 15 to 18 people that were there. They were, lots of people were invited. We had some community members, we had some staff members, teachers that came, definitely front office staff that got to, got to see what we were looking at. That led us to reconvene as a smaller committee to make our final decision. So in this evaluation process, we looked at the rollout time. Our proposed rollout time is once you approve it, we will start walking the sites, doing system configuration, talking through what is a priority for Montgomery ISD, having inflation happen along with all of the other construction projects going on over the summer, and rolling out in August of '25 with our new year. So we did a proof of concept with Crisis Go and Raptor Technologies were our final two. A big piece of this, we had an evaluation through the RFP process that asked about costs, it asked about the needs of the district, and the needs of the district were that first list that I gave you of the priorities, the things that they presented to us. And then what else, how can we grow with it, right? What else can we do? So our evaluation criteria, each member of that committee had several lists that they had to evaluate on based on what presentation the company gave. So system integration, can we ingest our cameras into there? Can our first responder see our cameras? Can we lock doors? Can we make sure that we can integrate with strobes or integrate with our digital displays throughout our building? Ease of use and accessibility, how easy is it for our staff members to be able to push a button, to be able to use their phone, to take a roster, to do accountability? And can we customize it? So how much customization do we have? What can our teachers do with the app, and what can they do with their, their wearable? Visitor management, we wanted to make sure that if we were going to a new system, if it included visitor management, that it checked all the boxes for background checks on that one. And we also know where our visitors are supposed to be on our campus during an emergency. Reunification and accountability, we wanted to make sure that there was a process built in so that way we knew exactly who was in what room, where they're supposed to be, how they're supposed to be released to their parents. Is there a way for us to document being able to know that a parent picked them up? How are we going to let parents know where their student is at in the process of being able to be re-unified? And then also being able to put this into drill mode and actually test it out with our staff instead of it just being a fluke of an emergency, right, to push it? We don't want that to happen. We want our first responders to, to be in our campuses when we do the drill modes. That way they know what happens. Scalability and customization, so this is going to be, can we put it at all of our auxiliary locations? If something is happening at the stadium, can I wear that button and be able to trigger? If I'm at the baseball field or I'm at the natatorium, right, we want to make sure that all of those spaces are covered and that the wearable, no matter what campus you're on, if you are taking it to that location, it will still work, right? We want to make sure it works throughout our district, especially us at the ESC where we are going out to campuses or our SPED department, right, where they travel from campus to campus. Compliance and security, this is, does it meet House Bill 3? Do we keep student data protected because they are going to be ingesting our SIS information, our student information in system? So how are they going to make sure that they stay compliant and our information stays And then lastly, it was about pricing and support. What does the training model look like? What does it look like for them to come on to the campuses? How often are we training? Is there modules for us to be able to issue out as part of that onboarding process for new staff or even returning staff every year? So our recommendation is for Crisis Go as our silent panic alert technology. Are there any questions?
I, I do have a few questions. Chief, you have anything you want to add on that real quick?
You know, since I've been here, this has been a project that Amanda and her team has been working on. It's been, it's been a priority not only for her, but for the district, really to look at what's out there, primarily because what we have doesn't really seem to meet our needs, and it's not going to meet or it doesn't meet the criteria of House Bill 3. So over the past 18 months or so, give or say, Amanda has, has involved us in this process. We've sit through different meetings, we've met with different vendors, you know, all the way to the point where we brought it before, the Safety and Security Committee as well as the community, and, you know, openly discussed this with questions. And at the end of the day, Crisis Go checks off every box that we're wanting it to check off. And primarily, it integrates with all our systems. There's nothing that, that, that technology, and correct me if I'm wrong, nothing that technology has to do to create a switch or a link or, or whatever it might be. Crisis Go meets everything that we need. They have a wearable device as well as a desktop device, but the wearable device has two different modes on it. You know, one for lockdown mode, one for just an alert mode. It integrates with our camera system, so if and when that alert goes off, it gives us a geo-link on where that indicator is, and then it emails that out to everybody that's on that list. It allows two-way communication between the persons that are involved in the active incident, i.e. via text, and whoever else is on the end of that receiving that. So at the end of the day, your team did an amazing job, and, and I, I think we, we selected what's best for our district that will lead us into the future and, and serve us well.
Thanks, Chief. I want to mention something real quick, Mr. Dennison. I think you were going there, so go ahead.
Will it communicate with county dispatch, or is it capable?
Okay, good question, good question. One of the hurdles, one of the issues, concerns we had to address is that Montgomery County, basically, when RAVE was implemented, mandated that all jurisdictions use RAVE. We satisfied that contract, the contract is up for renewal. It is a 911 notification system, so they cannot refuse to, to, to respond or, or to, you know, how would you say it? But yes, to answer your question, yes, it does. Now, would there, is there probably going to be a conversation that needs to be had with the Emergency Management Communication District to let them know that we're moving forward with a different platform? And I think it should be noted, some of the people that were in attendance at our latest meeting were from other school districts who are looking at the same type of movement within their district for a product that meets the regulations of House Bill 3.
I was going to say, so there, the current system that we have, RAVE, it does speak to, when I say speak to, you call 911, it all speaks to it, right?
Yes.
But there's a, a visibility part and interaction part with RAVE if you're with the county that they can, they can see directly. But what it did not do, and here's the biggest difference, in my opinion, one of the biggest safety things we can do, is with Crisis Go, and honestly, even with the other vendor option, Raptor, both were phenomenal options, but as, as soon as I push that emergency button, every TV we have, every monitor we have, every intercom we have, every light, it all automatically alerts everyone in the building. So there's top priority, when something happens, notify everyone as close as possible, right? Get everyone that is on campus notified and alerted and safe. And we have officers there, we've got officers responding, offices are coming anyway, and we can provide that real-time information through the platforms that we've, we've selected. But the integration with our systems to no longer have to worry about, okay, I've hit a button, or I've got a lockdown, and someone's got to run to a phone and pick up the phone and dial intercom code and say lockdown, 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 it automatically does that for us. So there is a kind of a cost-benefit analysis of the benefit we get of the immediate notification, everyone closest to the incident versus the, the, the lack of visibility things on, on the county side.
Also, one other thing it does is, like Dr. Ruffin said, when it initiates that initial push button, it allows us, it tracks it, it keys in with the, with the camera system, allows us to look in to an active situation, and then we can share that with the first responders coming. So not only are we looking at live, live cameras of where this is actually happening, we're sharing it with our group. So any responders coming to the thing can actually look in and see the same thing, see what we're seeing.
And when, when situations call for it, I know that y'all have a reunification plan, it's documented, it's in our EOP, but if something has to shift on the fly, we can do that on the fly. Y'all can do that on the fly, not we.
Sure, sure.
It has a, it has a map that we can, that we can coordinate with the first responders coming in, EMS, fire, anybody, and we can draw different sections, like, hey, we have a hot zone right here, we need y'all to, to station over here, or we need, we need triage over here, and we can continually update that or change it as needed and share it out with them.
Other questions?
And they're also rechargeable, so what happens when the batteries are dead?
It alerts. So when it gets low, it'll alert the person. If it gets too low, it'll alert us.
How long were those batteries going to last?
A couple of weeks, the batteries on the...
Wait, I'm sure it's going to last for three months.
Three months.
And then as far as the alert system, how far away from a campus will it work?
So it'll be geofenced, so as we walk the campuses and we make the map of the campus, we will geofence that. And it depends on the beacons, right? Are we putting a beacon on every single light pole, or are we putting it just in areas where people are going to congregate?
All the, all the sports fields will have a repeater and everything like that?
Yes, sir.
And that's all, that's all up to us. How much time will it take?
Any other questions? I'd like to reserve two more till the end. Any others? All right, one question for me. What's training going to look like for our staff on this throughout the summer, throughout next year? What's it going to look like?
I would like to bring in all of our administrators, all of our ESC employees in July, so when they all come back on contract, I would, we'll negotiate that and do times and everything. I think as far as the campuses goes, we're looking at pulling in receptionists, secretaries, APs, the people that are going to be working either inside of Crisis Go or within the front row system, since it integrates there, to initiate those types of lockdowns and key, key them up. Because it's not just a lockdown, right? It can be a hold, it can be you're looking for a student, it can be, you know, you're turning off the bells, like, there's all kinds of ways that we can use the platform and use the customization within Crisis Go to build out those pieces, right? And so we want that feedback first of what do you need, what does it need to look like? And then, then we will go through the training pieces. As far as the campuses go, I will probably reserve that for y'all to train.
So, so when we do our standard response training every, every year that we go through each campus, we will add this, just like we added RAVE to it. This will be a little more in-depth. On top of that, if we get the first campus done, we'd like to do a mock drill with outside agencies coming in and doing a training to actually see what it would look like with everybody responding with that first, with that first campus being completed. But it will be a continual training, when every time we have subs, there's sub-training, we will have to do, we will have to add this training to it, and, and like we've trained.
And there's, there's online training options, we can bring them back in for yearly. It's just really up to us of how in-depth we want to go. I think the big piece is training Chief and his staff, and then training the technology staff when we get into that platform and see that changes need to be made or updated or, you know, how we track down the teachers that don't charge their device.
All right, any other questions?
And then after an event, then it'll, you'll put out communication for an all-clear, correct?
Yes.
And there's some more details with reunification that's, that's really good about, about it sending out information and tracking the students as they move through reunification, that they push out to parents. So there's all kinds of great communication that will happen after, after the fact.
You know, part of the system is designed where it has predetermined notifications, and when you move from one level to the next level to the next level, then it would notify whoever administration wants that message to go out to.
Is the system also upgradable if we need anything upgraded in the future, or?
Upgradable. While we will be, depending on what length of contract we have, that will be that determination of when we can upgrade. And it'll be the beacons, I'm assuming software upgrades are happening as, as they come out, but it'll be the software that's actually on the, or the hardware that's on the campus. So there are like little beacons that get placed throughout the campus in every room in the transmitter.
And out of deference, I believe we have a Crisis Go rep here tonight.
We do, so Dan, is that clear? I asked him to come because I didn't know what kind of question you and I would be. If you didn't know whether or not they were too, too technical.
What was your name, sir?
Dan Tutt.
Dan, you were going to say something on that last question? Or did Amanda?
I was just listening intently, if they didn't have an answer, I was going to.
Got it, perfect. So I want to take a moment and mention again, this has been about 18 months, as Ms. Davis said.
It's been since '21. Prepping.
Yeah. So this is not a decision that is light, that is taken lightly. Mr. Dennison has sat on the subcommittee, I've sat on the subcommittee. That subcommittee has been well-run. We meet, I think, twice a semester, correct, Chief? We come and we thoroughly dig in. It's not just regular members of the community, although there are parents and teachers. We have first responders from every agency that we will engage with. We've thoroughly reviewed this, we've thoroughly reviewed all of the folks that submitted RFPs. We have dug into what this means, and the district has done an excellent job. Board members, for that reason, I see no concern with moving forward with the recommendation on Crisis Go. I would highly recommend it and believe it can do what we do, we need it to do, and we have thoroughly thought through this. That's not the only thing I want to say, and then I'll shut up, I promise, Chief. This is just one product that we have in our safety approach on campus that we have thoroughly vetted. There are others that we have been thinking through in the same timeframe, and so I, I think there are no open loopholes. There are no challenges that we have not really thought through, thanks to yourself, Ms. Davis, to you, Chief, to you, Sarge, to everyone that we mentioned earlier. We have really thoroughly thought that over. So I would like to personally make the recommendation, if that's okay. So I would like to personally make the recommendation, if that's okay, make the, make the motion, if that's okay. I'll motion to approve the purchase of Crisis Go for our SPAT technology. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and staying, I'm proud to say that that's what we chose, so thank y'all for all your hard work and your due diligence. All right, next, action item 6H, consider approval to nominate and endorse Ms. Elizabeth Ivy as a candidate for the Tasby Board of Directors for Region 6, Position A, as presented. Dr. Ruffin, what's this all about?
She's gotta sell herself for like a three-minute speech about why she's just, no, honestly, it goes back to board goals, right? Part of our, part of the board goals is to advocate for Montgomery ISD to be involved and engaged at every level of, of the educational process. And each year, Tasby puts out opportunities for board members to be nominated to serve on these different Board of Directors-level positions, and there's representatives from each region throughout the state. And so part of that application process, Ms. Ivy has expressed interest in that, and part of the application process is a board, a board action to support that desire, and if you want to speak anymore about that, I just think it's very important to highlight the, it's a continual effort. You also serve on our Legislative Platform Committee. Y'all, as board members, do so much more outside of Monday or these Tuesdays meetings and then Tuesday workshops, and the things that happen between. This is a commitment of further volunteering your time to the work of not just Montgomery ISD, but public education in Texas, so.
Ms. Ivy, any comments?
No, I mean, I live this every day as a professor of education and seniority.
Any questions? Hearing none, let's put a motion forward.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Elizabeth Ivy as our candidate Board of Directors for Region 6.
Thank you. Mr. Robb, second?
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was that a no, Ms. Ivy? Those with nay and opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your service, your continued service there, Ms. Ivy, hoping that that pans out. All right, folks, we're now into information items. As a board, we are required to read an annual update of continuing education credits. As board president, I'm required to announce the name of each board member who's completed the required continuing education credits. There are eight training areas for board members in continuing education, local district orientation, orientation in the Texas Education Code, post-legislative update, team building, additional continuing education, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children, and school safety. To the extent, I'm sorry, it's a little bit long, folks, but to the extent applicable to each board member, I will announce completion or deficiency as required, of required training. At the conclusion of this announcement, I will announce any board member's training in excess of the continuing education requirements. The following first-year board members had completed the following trainings. Local district orientation has been completed by Paul Cameron and Elizabeth Ivy. All board members have completed the following trainings: annual team-building training, additional continuing education training, biennial training on evaluation of student academic performance and setting goals, the biennial training on identifying, identifying and reporting abuse and trafficking, the biennial training on school safety, and the annual training on cybersecurity. The following board members have exceeded their required amount of continuing education hours. Board member Paul Cameron exceeded the required amount of continuing education by one additional hour. Board member, Board Secretary Eddie Nguyen exceeded the required amount of continuing education by two additional hours. Board Vice President Lori Turner exceeded the required amount of continuing education by three additional hours. Board member Sean Dennison exceeded the required amount of continuing education by 6.75 additional hours. Board member Elizabeth Ivy exceeded the amount of continuing education by 3.25 hours. And last but not least, Board Member Nate Robb exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by 14 additional hours, Mr. Robb. That is to be commended.
Well, there's a story there.
Okay, there's a story there.
Every time I went to check, Tasby kept saying, I need more hours, so I kept going. And I called them and they said, no, you're kidding me.
Well, congratulations. And from board, I would actually say congratulations to everyone, going, every board member going in excess. That is one thing that I remember experiencing the first year I was on the board as kind of a surprise, that they don't tell you that that's something you've got to do. So every board member seeking that excess, in excess, it's to be commended, so thank y'all very much. Any questions? All right, moving on, information item 7B, department update from transportation. Mr. Taylor's been very patient in the past, in the back there.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, President Fuller, and members of the board. This is my opportunity to talk about my department, and I will try and keep it brief, although it will be hard because we love what we do. Just wanted to do my did you knows, this kind of give us a little pat on the back here. We transport 4,446 kids daily on average. That means about 45% of the kids in MISD are on our buses every day. That's a pretty big, pretty big event for us. That's a high number, a lot of districts don't ever reach that amount. We trans, we travel about 5,850 miles every day. That's from here to El Paso in Texas measurements, I've not tested that like I did the other one, but that's what the numbers work out to be. And from August 1st until April 11th, when I ran the numbers, we had 1,185 field trips that we took care of that's academic and athletic, so that includes all of our buses that had to be scheduled and fueled and brought back and taken out. We employ 82 drivers and monitors, a fleet supervisor, three mechanics, four operational supervisors, and a receptionist. We still have a mechanic position open, several driver position open, and a couple monitor positions currently vacant. We are constantly trying to hire into those positions. We currently operate 80 big buses for 52 regular routes and 17 buses for our 12 special ed routes, and we now have a SUV that we use for a out-of-district transport, which has saved us quite a bit. In terms of goal one, academic achievement, we are trying to reach 95% on-time arrival rate in the mornings. We were able to reach that, I kind of took a small 10-day sample right before, as I was preparing for this, and ran the numbers, and we were right at 95%. I did go back and look at February, we were a little lower in February, but I like to think that means we're improving every day and getting better every day. So just to give you an example, Delta Airlines' on-time arrival rate is 84.72, so we're much better than Delta, so, so fly Montgomery. Anyway, school safety, one of our other goals, we have been using this Smart Tag system for a few, a couple of years now. One of the things that we've been trying to push is to get all of our parents involved with the Smart Tag Parent App. Our numbers have seen a great increase over last year, which I like to think the word is getting out, 117% increase over last year. What this does is allow our parents to keep track of where their kids are. In fact, we have sort of stopped getting the phone calls of, where is my kiddo, and got the phone calls of, the app doesn't seem to work today and I'm panicking, calls. So we are working on making sure that our parents have this information and know where the buses are, know where the kids are, and can keep track of them. We have cut down on the number of concerns about the kids on our buses, where they are, and how they're getting to and from school every day by quite a bit, so this has been a real load off of our shoulders, because we never want that phone call of wondering where a student is. We still do have an issue with our kids not using their IDs to get on and off the bus. One of the beauties of the system is they can use their school IDs. When they don't, we still tag them on the bus manually, but as a substitute driver occasionally, having to look down and find that kiddo is a distraction, so we want our kids to participate in it and use their tags. We're gonna start sending out emails that basically say, hey, would you please make sure your kiddo uses this? We find it's a lot quicker and smoother when the students are involved in that process, and they understand how important it is for us. School safety, number two, we are proposing to install a remote video, bus video downloading system. The systems that we have on our newer buses right now already currently have the software available with a few minor hardware adjustments and some additional purchases. We can find a way to bring that data directly into our hands without having to walk out to every bus, pull the hard drive, bring it into the building, stick it in a little machine, grab what you need, take it back out to the bus. There's a lot of things involved in that process, it's very manual, very labor-intensive, and it does slow down how quickly we can get responses to our campuses and look over some issues. So we're hoping to have that system in place and, and share some of that success with you in, in the near future. It also will allow those cameras to be checked daily, so they'll get a wake-up call, basically say camera one's working, camera two's working, camera three is working, hard drive is working, and that way we know that the technology we have is reliable. Right now, sometimes we don't even know that some of the cameras might be fuzzy, blurry, or not even working until we have to go out and pull that video, and that's just something we want to try to avoid. Let's see, this is kind of a wrap-up, kind of a really proud to say, the third and final purchase of our bond buses, bond 22 buses are, have been ordered, and the last time I checked with them, they have the VIN numbers. That for us means that they've started the process to have them built, and we are expecting to see them sometime between June and August of 2025, which means when we start school in 20, in August of 2025, we will have all 46 of the buses that were purchased through the bond in our hot little hands and, and have them on the road. We're very excited about that, and now I can add two more school activity buses to that number as well. So we're really proud to have these units and thankful that the members of, or the voting members of Montgomery allowed us to have these wonderful gifts. Let's see, the, we finished out our TCEQ grant, we talked about this over the last couple of years, we finally had the last check come in from TCEQ. That grant, to remind everybody, was we took five older buses that were route buses and were able to, since we're buying new buses anyway, we went out for the grant and said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna stop using these buses, and the state of Texas allowed us to use grant money to help defer the increased costs of school buses. I don't know that we would have gotten to 46 buses without the additional, additional money from the grant. I did some quick numbers, the first buses we purchased averaged about $131,000 apiece, the last purchase averaged $152,000 apiece. So we were able to use this grant money to stretch out that bond funds and, and finish out these purchases. We have been looking at grants in the future, it's sort of a bittersweet, we don't have old enough buses on routes right now to qualify for any of the emissions reduction grants that are available. It's a great thing for us, but it does mean that we, we miss out on any funding that's available. Let's see, we are working on our new fuel island, for those of you who passed by Liberty and saw all of that dirt movement, that's our, that's our life now, and we are looking forward eagerly to having a brand-new area where we can park our buses and fuel there at Liberty. One of the things that I wanted to highlight as part of that package is a named fueling system. It allows our drivers to just go to the pump, and instead of typing in a bunch of numbers and remembering everything, if you're like me, I have to write the odometer number down on my hand, because between getting out of the bus and going to the little unit and typing it in, I forgot the numbers. So this way, we don't have to worry about that, and they just walk up and plug that in, there's a mechanical magnetic, sorry, magnetic electronic connection that is made, and it will automatically keep track of where the fuel's going, and that's going to help us reduce staff time, make sure that we know what our purchase is, when we need to purchase new fuel, where they're going, keep track of mileage for buses a lot better, because there's a lot of human error when you're trying to type all that in. So we're really looking forward to that system, I know my guys are actually kind of excited about that. Let's see, human capital, goal number four, I just want to highlight some of the things that we've been doing this year. To us, it's training, but to, to folks outside of our department, we wanted to kind of highlight how we do fun training. One of the things we did is the district scavenger hunt, essentially sent our drivers out in groups and said, go to this campus and look for this, take a picture, send it back. They all had to get to every campus and, and to our stadiums, it's a great way to get to know the district, and for those who are not from here, get to see where all the schools are. A lot of our drivers only drive for two or three campuses, and if we ask them to drive, say, to Keenan, they have no idea how to get to Keenan. So this is a way to, to get them to know the district and also be available in cases of an emergency. We also did the school buses rodeo, R-O-A-D-E-O, rodeo, and that's just skills that we have our drivers go through, wrangling through cones without running over anything. And we did recently Transportation Jeopardy. Children of what ages are generally considered capable of recognizing traffic danger? For 500 points, anybody want to take it? Okay, the answer is 10 to 12 years of age. And I can let you read the rest of that on there, but we have been partnering with other parts of the district and outside sources to get our guys some training. One of the things I love to do is the fire department. If you've never pulled the pin on a fire extinguisher, learning how to use it in an emergency is a little bit daunting, so giving them that access is one of the things we wanted to try and do. And lastly, I did mention this one, this was something that was eye-opening for our, our special needs drivers and monitors. We took part of our training, and every single driver and monitor was either in a wheelchair, had a blindfold, had noise-canceling earphones, or some other, some other device that rendered them unable to see the world the way they had just minutes ago, and we put them on buses and drove around, so they got firsthand knowledge of how it was to be one of the kids on their bus, and I think it's made them better drivers and better monitors as a result. Lastly, we're in progress hosting a survey to our transportation staff to gather valuable information. We're using the new thought exchange process with the communications department's help to get an idea of where, where we are with them and what they consider important, and there's 10 questions, so they don't get a lot of survey lag, but 10 questions and 10 comment sections, and we're looking forward to those responses real soon. Okay, human capital, one of the things that we want to talk about is our turnover rate, so this was the numbers when I was working on this last week. Things are always changing in transportation, but right now we're at a turnover rate of about 18.45%, which is kind of up there, but in transportation, things are always changing. I would like to note that two of my monitors did go into the lost column, but they were lost to Bobby at MES as paras, so while I'm a little upset with him, I can't be mad that they found a better home and are happier there. Let's see, community service, again, I mentioned the Smart Tag system. One of the things that we do like about this is it helps our substitute drivers, I am one of those beneficiaries. Back in the good old days, you were handed a piece of paper with a route on it, sometimes it had a map, sometimes it didn't, left turns, right turns, and if it's 4:30 in the morning and you're trying to figure out where to go, it can be daunting. With our system now, our drivers are more accurate with their turns, we, we find more consistency, because the tablet helps them, it's just like the GPS in your car, and I'm happy that we finally moved into that technology and given our drivers that level of assistance. And I'll just go ahead and move on. Last, one of the last things I want to talk about is we do have, we were able to hire receptionists last year, which has greatly improved our communications with the outside community and also with schools. Herefore, we had to, you know, spread it out throughout the other, through our staff, having somebody dedicated just to making sure that the phone gets answered and to make sure that the responses are coordinated has been a real help to us, and we've seen a great improvement in the number of people who've said, hey, we can finally get through now, and thank you for that. We also have added a part-time dispatcher, we had a former employee that came back and said she wanted to work with us part-time, and having a dispatcher there to be able to just handle the radio traffic in the afternoons has really helped our drivers and freed up our staff. The last part of this, I would like to make sure that we recognize the impact makers for the district from the department, and their names are up there, Kaylee, Jennifer, Tammy, Ruben, Melissa, and Ria and Rodney, we're all Department Kaylee, Jennifer, Tammy, Ruben, Melissa, and Ria and Rodney were all department, or impact makers from our department, and I wanted to recognize them. This is our mission statement, which we've read, which we've had in the past, but I did keep this slide in here so you can see the wonderful picture that we took on February 17th during one of our end services. That's why everybody's wearing green. It was St. Patrick's Day. But that's, that's the large part of our crew and I just want to thank you for your time and opportunity to share my department with you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions, board?
I have one. How do we recruit and retain quality bus drivers? It seems to be an ongoing problem, not just here.
Sure. Yeah. Bus driving is one of those things, it's very, it's, it's tough. When you boil it all down, it's a split shift. You've come in early in the morning, you go home, you come back in the afternoon, you run for 182 days. It's, it's not a job for everybody. And so we are constantly out there trying to find folks that want to come in and work with us. One of the good things about living here in Montgomery is we have a lot of folks who are post-retirement and are looking for things to do. Some of the folks on that list, impact makers, one of them in particular, Mr. Ruben Shandy is a, was an executive for United for a number of years and he wanted to give back. And, and so he comes in and drives for us every day and is one of our, our, our better assets in the department. So we're constantly trying to find and recruit folks. And of course, we go through the training process, so we, we provide paid training, which does help us keep our folks. We go through that process every step of the way. A lot of times, if, if you're not familiar with what goes on on a school bus or with children, that training process, which can be three or four weeks, does help us retain our folks. But it is a constant struggle, not just here, but everywhere. And it's just the nature of the job. So we, we are constantly trying to improve. If you have suggestions, anyone has suggestions on how we can go out and find folks, we, we'd use a lot of word of mouth and we go out and, and talk to folks. A lot of our folks are, we call it a family in transportation, but sometimes it's literally, you know, aunts, uncles, cousins, grandparents, granddaughters, sisters, brothers that, that see, hey, I can be a school bus driver too because I know my cousin works in the, in the industry. So I don't know if that's the best answer I can give you, but it's, it's the only one I've got right now.
How is our compensation compared to the personal gap?
Right now, we're doing pretty good. We're at $20, $20, so we're kind of right there in the, in the mid-range. It is a competitive piece. A lot of times what you're working on though is, say, for example, I think Conroe is still a little bit lower than us, but Conroe also has a three-tiered system and so they have longer routes. I will say coming from Conroe that that is, makes for a very stressful day because their routes are three and a half to four hours in the morning and the same in the afternoon. And you're on the bus driving the entire time. There's no quit. We have a three, a two-tiered system, so our routes are generally three hours in the morning and three in the afternoon. While that may not be for everybody, it, I do see a lot less stress in our staff than I did when I worked just down the road a little ways. So it compares well, but it does require us to go out and find just those right people that want to work for us.
Other questions? I've always said that our bus drivers are some of our first and our last miles our kids think, see. So Mr. Taylor, thank you for all you're doing and keep it up, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. Information item 7C, bond update. We're getting close, folks.
Thank you. All right. For the record, I yielded some of my time to both Amanda and Eric, so mine should be more concise. All right. So before I get started, just real quick, I like to make sure that, that the guys that work on this project and gals every day feel appreciated and recognized. So David and, and his team with Joe, Amanda and her team are, some of our partners are here tonight with Huckabee that are in here. And we even have some people, some members of SLT that, that chime in from time to time that are very helpful. Carrie has been very active in kind of the final stages of getting ready to fiddle up or get started at the triplet. So all that is a team effort to get this bond going. So one of the slides that I put up every time is kind of our promises made in 2022. And a little quick reminder here of what the 11 categories were in Prop A. Prop B is one and Prop C with technology devices are the separate ones. Here is our project status update. Right here, as you can see, that we're moving, we're moving along pretty good. CTE's made quite a bit of progress this time and we're moving forward with the Transportation Fuel Center renovations that the triplets have been stalled with Joc and some work with submittals and things like that. So that'll start moving here in a little bit and I'll go over that. And then stadium renovations has moved along as well. Safety film is 100% complete now and punched. Well, we've spent up to this point of the 326, roughly what we have left. All right. So Creekside, quick update on Creekside, no pictures associated with this necessarily, but we are in the process of final punch. It's been a long process. We're down, narrowing it down to security films, some HVAC controls, and then the Torazo, which is the big ticket item. Did want to update you on the Torazo at Creekside. I think everyone in our community has maybe noticed that it may not be the quality that it should be. There's cracks throughout. We've documented those cracks. We've been in constant contact with POG. Huckabee's been with us through that, walking through that process. Recently, there's been some leadership changes at POG that have impacted, maybe helped get some things moving forward. We recently had a conversation with the, I would say, a senior member of the executive team with POG, who has assured us that he will address these concerns. POG came down today. We met at 7:30 at Creekside along with Huckabee. Myself and my team were there, walked the campus, told them our concerns, showed them the cracks. They are going to reconvene and they have informed me and Brendan that they actually sent a default letter to the Torazo installer, which shortly, briefly means, from what I learned today, is that they feel like that the product, the product is not up to par, that the contractor installed, or that the subcontractor installed, and that they will be coming to the table to discuss some options to get this remedied. They're going to do that. They're going to have a plan for us, some options and some, some updates next Wednesday is what they've assured me, was the timeline they gave me. The meeting was good. It was productive. It was probably the most honest and productive meeting we've had with them about that specific topic. So it was a good, it was, it was a good meeting. So we're looking to have some things start moving on this. The plan is for it, whatever remediation is done is going to be done over the summer. We have planned for Creekside not to have anything there as far as camps and, and stuff like that. But administration, because the entryways were epoxy floors where the decals were, they should have free access to and from the office area. So we're hoping to get that resolved pretty soon. Lake Creek additions in the finals punch, we got very few items left there. That project came along pretty, pretty smooth. CT and Ag, substantial completion on that. I don't know if I've ever put this up there, but 6/20 is the official substantial completion date. We're already seeing a lot of progress to where that 6/20 date is like, that's, yeah, we're going to make that. So I don't want to jinx it, but it's looking pretty good. We're in the process of procurement for our FFNE. That's a pretty long process. Some of the big items that we've had there are cosmetology was a long lead item and there are some manicure and pedicure tables that were specifically ordered by Brendan for his needs that were, are going to be there. Also some hair washing at salon stations that have a long lead time. They'll assemble those. They're going to come around May 15th. And the other things, we procured the AV lab, which is a top, a high dollar item. We've procured that and we are working on procuring a lot of those back rooms with the auto mechanic, which a lot of that is in the contractor's scope. But the fabrication, the welding, the construction, all those rooms back there is where a lot of our equipment's going to come from. Furniture's been, for the classrooms, has been procured a while back. You guys approved that a while back. Go through some quick pictures for you guys to look at. So the front entry is really coming together. Once again, I'm not trying to just harp on the fact that when I go to that job site, Stuart keeps that job site clean. And it makes a difference from when people, when we're walking up, it just makes me feel like that they, they're on top of things. So you'll see on the left-hand picture, that is the bus canopy that's going to be there. The canopy's not up yet, but that was our last piece of concrete, significant piece of concrete to pour on this project. So that's a big step. Here's the, the panels being stalled and the overlay and the glass has all been installed in that. Here's the back. The fence isn't up yet, but that's going to be the yard for a lot of those construction welding areas. And then you can see the display monument sign right there in front, this cover of a plastic protect it is right there. And that'll have some words that were, or some lettering on it that we're working on right now, getting some approval for. As you know, I have this very deep-rooted fear in Torazo, but as I've learned and talked with the Torazo installer, I made it a point in my team to sit down with them and have them walk us through the process of installation. They walked us through and assured us what they did. That lines up with what Huckabee and even Stuart has said has worked well in the past. They have, that project, and I came on here in May of last, around May last year, the Torazo was being stalled at Creekside. What I see how it's going down here, there's a significant difference. So I'm feeling really good about this Torazo. They poured pretty much all of it. I think the cafeteria is the only area left and that's the area you see right here. And that's that giant stairwell in the cafeteria as well. You can see some of the finishes and the acoustic panels in the cafeteria too, those kind of abstract expressionism designs that are up at the top of that have gone in in the cafeteria. Some of the ceiling grid has gone up. That's a big step. They'll do final inspections in that. Ceiling grid gets laid after those inspections happen. So having that grid up, again, in comparison to what Creekside and that experience, that was around June, that that was going up and we're in April. There's some, you can see the tile finishes and fixtures and a lot throughout. I tried to capture some of that. There's some black tile and some gray tile. And then you can see some tile in the main corridor. What you're looking at with the guy in the orange shirt right there, that's that main corridor. Here's the Cosmo room and the polished, the polished concrete look that we had in there. There's a lot of stains and things and things that can happen on a, on a, on a CTE floor. The recommendation would be to have that as something that's very durable. This was the product that was chosen for that and it's looking pretty good. They still got some work to do on it, but that room is coming along. And here is a bird's eye view from the balcony looking down at what the robotics area would be at CTE. And they're putting in the railings. They painted most of the areas here. They put that first layer of paint on and the floor there is, obviously that's going to be one of the last things they do with the stained concrete there. Here's, that, that is the fabrication lab for robotics. So you can see the power above it, overhead power and air supply there is put in. Then you have the auto mechanics shop right there that has some, they're kind of using that as a holding area for some of the finishes and stuff for the construction process. Here's upstairs, HSE area, you can see some cabinets, our health science area, cabinets are going in. Big step in our kitchen, our, our, like the child nutrition kitchen is some of the freezers and coolers have gone in, the vent hoods are in. The vent hoods are also in the, the bistro area. So this is one area that they actually ground down the Torazo right next to the cafeteria. So that's a big step that they're moving forward. Quarry tile being laid in the cafeteria or in the, the child nutrition area along with the culinary area. Moving down to the Ag barn, the Ag barn has, there's the finish wall, the mock-up wall where you can see the brick. If you've driven by there recently or looked in, it's hard to see in the back, but they have started to put some of that brick up on the CMU on the exterior. The paneling's going to start going up pretty soon. CMU walls are going on on the inside to separate kind of the hog pen areas and all that. We also have a mock-up here of the cattle pen. This is a mock-up they did for us with a fan and the fencing and the, and the, the, the holding pen area for the cattle. Here is some other areas. This is the central, no, that's the left side, I believe. No, that's looking back at the arena. That's the arena right there. And you can see in the background, that's where the bathrooms will be in the entrance to the, to the Ag Science Center. And then on the other picture, that is the areas in the cattle area. That is, I think that's either the left or right-hand side. And the middle is that covered area as well. This is, I wanted to add this in here, this is kind of the progress with the CTE expansion, office area expansion. Very rough, but they are working on some air conditioning and, and other power and water and things. We have not finalized that GMP for that, but they're still in the design phase of that. But as you can see, it's a pretty large space. And that was the shell out, is what we're referred to it as. High school renovation's going to start kicking up pretty soon. They've been doing some light work behind the scenes at night, pulling cable in preparation for front row and for, for other data cables and also the, the PA system. They're going to be doing some good work in athletics and fine arts as well this summer. Transportation Fuel Center, that substantial completion date is 8/8. That's what it is right now. They have poured some concrete. As you can see on the left-hand side, there is a foundation for the canopy area there and they poured that shed area right there as well. I think they did that today, David? Did that today or Monday? And then you can see the piers for the canopy as well on that. And here is the actual flat work or the, the parking lot on Phase 1, which is the back area, kind of towards the back away from the road. What you see from the road is a big pile of dirt. This is what's behind that. So Nash is, is taking there, they took the drone up and you can see the detention ponds and the paved area that has been poured along with the fuel canopy area and the wash station is there. Canopy or the, the retention pond is moving along. Weather, it's very sensitive to weather. Any kind of mud gets in there slows it down. So they, they, hopefully we'll be wrapping that up in the next week and then they'll backpour the areas where the retention wall is. Here's some more pictures of the paving, that back corner right there. And detention pond, and then the detention pond, as you can see, the water kind of sits in there for a little bit. Triplets are starting up. We finished up all design of that. Submittals are in progress. We did some work on the front entry design with some feedback from Carrie and the principals on that. Finalized some of the finishes. We are working on communicating, our plan is to go to each one of those campuses, talk about the process this summer, give them an idea of some work that's going to be done. So they know, they make sure that they get their rooms prepared and ready, get that all on their mind so it can ease their mind and the contractors can go in and get their work done. So we're going to have those meetings. We're going to partner with technology. She's going to talk through a lot of the stuff that they're going to be doing at some of these campuses related to the technology wall that's going to be put up with some of the smart panels. So, so you'll see some fencing going up in some of these, hopefully starting late April to early May to get some of that work done. We're also going to do some night work with the restrooms to see what's behind some of the walls with anticipation of some, some issues there. They wanted to get in and get started early with that. And then you'll see some painting in the administration area so they can have that space this summer and then they can get that done before school ends. So here's some examples of some of the, these are in draft form for the most part, but the front entry additions for each one of the campuses. So here's Lone Star. Hadn't been finalized with the star and the lighting or the, the wording yet and how that's going to be arranged, just mainly the canopy is what's been in there. And then Madley Ranch and Stewart Creek. And Stewart Creek, we're pricing out the addendum for the metal sheeting to go over the top of that. And if it doesn't fit within the budget, it would just be the stone. And here is a mock-up of one of the bathrooms that would happen with those, when they redo those gang bathrooms in there. So a big upgrade from what they were. Athletic Complex, we, Parking Lot A, the exciting part of that is set to be poured April, our asphalt, April 23rd. They have got the concrete down or the crushed stone down for that. It's ready to go. Once they get that poured, they'll start working on the road to go out to Lone Star. Underground for the new concession was kind of the last big barrier to start pouring the, the foundation and the piers for the, the bleachers. Just a reminder of what the, what kind of the layout was of this. And then here's some of the work that's being done on the new fieldhouse addition. CMU walls are up. The roof isn't quite yet. Structural steel's about two weeks out for that and the rafters. And here's some of the work that is being done on Parking Lot A. That's that new parking lot that's extending up behind all the way to Lone Star or almost all the way to Lone Star. It's kind of a side view of the concession stand budded up with that CMU. And then here's some of the bleacher underground work there for the stadium addition. Here's some more pictures of walking, kind of walking through that locker room. And then a reminder of what the turf. Other summer projects, Oak Hills and Keenan. Just a reminder, they're going to have some panels being put in and it'll be kind of light work, not as dirty. And then Lincoln is going to have some grading work done on the front along with some grading And then Lincoln is going to have some grading work done on the front, along with some grading work done on some of those detention ponds. And that's being done out of contingency from the Package C. And we'll wrap that project up. Any questions for me?
I have one. Are we going to have forklifts on-site at the CTE Center to unload equipment like there's materials, I guess, for the shops? How are we going to load this?
Like unload it or store it?
Unload.
Unload? So you're talking about the, like, the big items that are coming?
Yeah, like, no, long-term. Metal to unload, lumber for the construction, all of that type of stuff.
Oh, once it's built? Yeah. I mean, there, I have not seen the, I can't remember the exact layout of how that fencing works, but tell me what your question was again, like?
Are we going to have a forklift that stays?
Forklift?
Yes.
Yeah.
That stays on-site.
We have not talked about that.
We might.
Most of the, most of the deliveries and things, they will offload and pack for us, but once it's in place, like, I know the welding or construction science, they've got that giant crane that can lift and move some things around, but it's probably a great conversation to have, just making sure that we've got someone certified to operate that. And we have forklifts around the district already. I don't know what, how often those are used, if one can be housed there and stay there for use. We'll see.
Sorry, I didn't hear the first part of the question when you said forklift. I got you.
Brad, can you go back to the Ag Barn, that one photo of one of the cattle pens?
You closed it?
That's all right. You showed a picture of one of the cattle pens with an overhead bar. How high, do we have any idea how high that is? Because that looked fairly low.
I did not walk into it, but I can check on that.
I was just curious what, you know, full grown?
Most things I hit my head on.
Right, and I don't, so I was just curious.
Yeah.
Okay.
It didn't feel too low when I walked by it and looked at it, but I did not walk up to it and see what it was, but I can find out.
Probably just the photo, then. I just want to make sure, you know, we thought about getting a full-grown heifer or whatnot in there.
Sure.
Make sure there's the clearance, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
The pen stood afterwards, the fan was hanging on that as well.
Yeah.
The fan's not standing? No. They just did it to show how like they go with the back legs.
Do you know the height of that, Brendan, that opening?
I don't.
Okay.
Board members, any other questions?
I have, I have one. So these pictures and all these projects we're talking about, these are from the 2022 bond, correct? Everything we're discussing?
Yes.
Okay. Have you heard anything, is the district talking about going after another bond?
That's what I'm thinking.
Right, but have you heard anything, any discussion about another bond coming up?
So I can, I can tell you that there's no current plans for a future bond. That's a, a long process. It starts with the establishment of a bond steering committee that is six, seven, eight, nine months ahead of any potential bond call. So no, we are focused on maximizing the impact of the 2022 bond that was supported by our community at seventy-some-odd percent. And then there's a long-range planning committee in place, just reviewing how we currently utilize all of our facilities and making sure that we are utilizing those to the maximum extent possible and forecasting visions for the next five, 10 years for the district, not for the next eight to 12 months of the district.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, let's move on to the last item for the night, 7D Legislative Update.
Good evening. Thank you to everyone who's stuck around for this. This is really giving an update, quite exciting to hear from y'all. Legislature is well underway. January, or June 2nd is the final day of a 90-day. So in regard to Day 92, if we were on a cross-country flight, all day with the seatbelt line on, so the final day is air-to-air landing. So reminder of our priorities of increasing the basic allotment, increased funds for special education services and teachers, increased funding for safety, changes to the student discipline code, and we are working with legislators on legislation to allow the option to re-enter in this with our active care. And I'll get into the specific items that are addressing all of these proposals. Just a reminder, this was, and this slide was shared during a town hall meeting that we felt where the community could not come in and ask questions about our budget and items we're spending on. But these are areas that are under, under the mandate from the state. So if you look at our security expenditures from last school year, we spent just over 1.4 million dollars, and we were allocated $240,000 for special education. We spent over 10.5 and were allocated just over 9.3. And for transportation costs, we spent nearly $5 million and were allocated 1.3 as part of the funding formula. And so these are due to mostly inflation factors. So this is not, you know, requesting additional funds for these or knocking on this out. It's just simply needing the inflationary impact since 2019, the last time the basic allotment was increased. Key developments, last week, the House passed the state budget this session. The state budget in Senate bill one, some highlights of that for education, $75.6 billion is one of the foundation school program. That includes 7.7 billion in new money, mostly tied to House Bill Two and $400 million for school safety, which is in House Bill 124. The budget passed the House, so it has to go back to the Senate for negotiation, where we've heard that the chambers are closer than they typically are at this point in previous sessions. So we anticipate that the public opinion will wrap up hopefully likely in the next few weeks. School Finance Bill, this is the big school finance package on the list, which on the list is a fancy word for a very long bill that has a number of different proposals and changes within it. I think the key change is the increase of the basic allotment, which we support, is a $395 per student increase, up from $6,160 to $6,555. It does also include a mechanism for a portion of that increases based on value growth each year. So there's an automatic increase in basic allotment based on property value growth, which is, which is good for a district like Montgomery, because when the basic allotment increases, it reduces our exposure to recapture. The bill also adds funding for full day, prepaid. It adds prepaid to the early educational allotment. We're actually, just a few minutes ago, our state representative, Will Metcalf, sent over the runs, which is what the capital refers to, a legislative budget board creates. He found us a major school finance bill. They create a list of all the school districts and how a bill will impact each school district. They call it the runs. I guess they actually call it that. So we just received that a little bit ago from Will Metcalf. He's been very helpful on many, on many items this session. So we need to review that, see its positive impact on the districts. And also, we're waiting to see how the two chambers will resolve differences between House Bill Two, which is the school finance version or bill in the House, and Senate Bill 26, which is the Senate's teacher pay bill. The Senate's bill is a $4.85 million proposal that increases, their direct, raises the teachers based on the size of the district and years of experience, and it increases allocations under the existing teacher incentive allotment, the TIA. The school finance proposals are moving in both chambers. This bill will likely pass very soon, or a version of this bill. It increases our school safety allotment from $10 per ADA to $14 per ADA, so not per student, for, so per average daily attendance, and increases the campus allotment from $15,000 to $37,000. So estimated about $280,000 in new funding for safety for M.I.C., which doesn't, doesn't completely close that gap in expenditure and revenues on the Samba's getting security budget item, but it closes it somewhat. We're above, as a reminder, we're above the state requirement for armed officers on every campus, two at each high school. And then just a reminder of the slide previously about our expenditures versus our revenues on some of the city. Shout out to John Dennison, who was the caperule, and testified on a bill that would provide us with additional flexibility for also additional flexibility for meeting that state mandates for an armed officer on every campus, did a great job. And to SD 260, that's a way of consideration from the full house. Like I said, those bills will likely be, I think, delivered very soon. House Bill Six, this is the discipline code changes. This bill was actually debated on the House floor today. Dr. Ruffin is a part of the chapter 37 publishing with several super clinics across the state. They met over the summer to provide recommendations for changes with this law code. Representative Metcalf filed a bill with community recommendations. House Bill Six is the quote-unquote on the list bill for school discipline. It changes or clarifies the three-day suspension limit, applies only to out-of-state or out-of-school suspensions. It changes the DA mandatory on paid possession. It allows some discretion for campus administrators, and then makes changes to disciplinary, disciplinary actions for severe behavior under third grade. This bill was being debated on the House floor today, actually, after entering the fourth meeting. And then the TRS active care reentry legislation. There's two bills that we have close eye on and are in contact with legislators about. One is the 2019-11. This bill has drafted to allow Montgomery I.C. the option to re-enter TRS active care. This, of course, in context, in 2021, there was legislation that it was sold as giving school districts more options, but actually prevented school districts that were offering TRS active care and a private insurance option for employees. For fire that achieved one, a decision that the school district took the private option, locked them out for five years. We surveyed our staff, looked at the number of our employees that were opting for TRS active care versus the private option, and it was, of course, it was split by seven employees. It was right down the middle. Based on the information we had at the time, we've left the private option rate have increased since 2021, TRS active care that's benefited from relief funds that the legislature has allocated. We're simply asking for the option to opt back in as we look for insurance options that have the least impact on employees. So both of these bills would allow us to do that. House Bill 3126 would require amendment to make eligible representative Metcalf supporting the bill sponsor to ensure that amendment is included in the bill. So we're watching the whole floor closely. A major item still pending, school funding and teacher pay. This has a huge impact on our development of our compensation plan that today was, or tomorrow, when they debate the House Bill Finance Bill, we'll have a clearer idea of what that looks like in St. Patrick's School District. Of course, education savings accounts and after legislation, that's still pending, been shot out like a cannon from the Senate, slipped out of the House. So we're waiting to see what, what impact that might have, short and long term, on some schools in Texas. And then another item that is related to schools in property tax rates is property tax relief compression versus an increase of the home site exemption. On the House side, they are allocating more funds, allocating more funds to pressure, which means that they are effectively lowering the local share of funding home schools and increasing the state shares, which allows you all to adopt a lower tax rate. That's how that works. And then on the Senate side, they are looking at increasing home site exemption, which is approved by voters, would increase the taxable value of homes to provide, of homes to provide property tax holders. The next steps were to their monitoring, House Bill Two. That's going to be determined by the House tomorrow, monitoring amendments on legislation that we're tracking. We're making communication with Senator Creighton, Representative Metcalf, and their staffs, where certainly written testimony in the House bills moved, and we're developing a compensation plan based on the information we have. So we can be proactive as soon as legislation is passed, we can start communicating how that compensation will look for ourselves.
Board members, any questions? All right.
I got, I got something to add to it. Ms. Teal, can you go back to the last slide on the continued, oh, man, now it's gone. Continue to develop 2526 staff compensation plan. Our, our staff will be receiving, hopefully tomorrow, a video that just outlines some of these exact same things and updates them on the, the progress of our compensation plan. The challenge is, as contracts are approved tonight for teachers, those contracts go out. It'd be great to be able to say, here's our compensation plan, and here's the raise that's provided for next year before you sign that contract. The challenge is, as we work to be as fiscally responsible as possible in this district and transparent, until we can understand our revenues, it's really hard to sign up for expenditures. That, that should make some sense, that when we say our compensation plan is contingent upon, or pieces of our compensation plan are contingent upon House Bill Two, on progress of the legislator on school funding, that should make a lot of sense. I would hope that we, as a district, would not just write a blank check without understanding what funding is going to flow from that. Every single conversation I have had, every single, the town hall meeting, every conversation that I've had regarding compensation plan for next year and the video that will go out specifically states that we are looking at doing everything we can do and providing greater than a 1% raise for next school year. But again, I can't say that that's going to be a 2%, a 3%, a 9% raise, because again, we don't know what our revenues are. We don't have a, a just crystal clear understanding of what all of our expenditures are right now. We meet on a weekly basis to evaluate new special education positions that have been recommended. Those all impact our ability and capacity to provide compensation increases. But this board, historically and consistently, has prioritized teacher pay and staff pay. And you can look back at the progress that has been made comparatively to the market value of these positions, where we have brought and where this board has brought the district in, in our staff groups in comparison to the market. One of the challenges in things like the healthcare legislation that's going on, those are specific conversations that we have had with both Senator Creighton and Representative Metcalf. We're trying to advocate, not just on the funding side, but how can we help our teachers and our staff, period? Healthcare, classroom management opportunities, all of those things matter. House Bill Two, I think it's actually on the floor tomorrow. I just received House Bill Two runs, which are the projections of what it will impact Montgomery I.C., how much new funding will be brought to the district based on House Bill Two as written. And that's no fault of Representative Metcalf. He, he got them and emailed them to me. But for us to know now that this is what is proposed and it's being heard to debate on the floor tomorrow morning does not provide us much of a runway to assess and analyze this. Again, no fault of, of anyone, any of our representatives when it comes to this, those open lines of communication. I have checked with Representative Metcalf, have you received these runs? And he's called me right away. I just left the Chair, Chairman Buckley's office, and, and we do not have them right now. So I want to highlight that because I think that gets, I don't know, underestimated, overlooked, or not, not validated and appreciated enough. We can't rally the troops, and I say troops, rally our CFO, ourselves, and understand how does this impact our district unless we've got these open lines of communication and willingness to share as soon as it's received. And so I want to say thank you to Representative Metcalf for getting these to us as quickly as he was able to. But there's still, there's still progress to be made and, and work to be done when it comes to public education funding.
Dr. Ruffin, I think those are great comments. Thank you for bringing that into clarity for us. Board members, any questions for Mr. Marino or Dr. Ruffin? Lots of work to be done, and thank y'all for everything that you do. With no other agenda items, folks, I'd like to adjourn this meeting.